Well, welcome everyone to the Malibu Library. Those of you here and those of you watching at home. And for those of you watching on livestream, there is no air conditioning in the room today to give you the feel of it, although it's actually pretty comfortable. For those of you who are here, there was papers on your chairs. I encourage you to use them for hand fans if you need them. So I guess you could say we're doing our part today for the Flex Alert. This is the first city council forum of the 2022 election season. And it's the first in-person forum since 2018 before the Woolsey Fire. So it's really nice to see everybody, even if most of us have masks on. And as you know, I'll be wearing my mask for as much as I can. One of the most common questions that came in this year, usually when I ask for questions from Malibu, I get questions, what are they going to do about short-term rentals? What are they going to do about camping in the hills? What are they going to do about MRCA? This year, the most common question I got was, how can we get back to more civil discourse with each other and indeed more gracious city council meetings? No question in my mind from my little survey that this community is longing to get back to the friendly, small-town Malibu atmosphere, the Malibu they knew and loved. I don't think the answer to that lies in any one of our candidates, as good as they are. I think it lies in each of us. As we gather here today for the first time in four years for this community tradition, which is really what it is, it's worth pausing to realize that all of us here and our community in general has really been through a lot in the last four years. It started with the Woolsey Fire. And before we were fully back on our feet, the pandemic hit. So it was sort of like you're getting back on your feet and you get hit by another train. Most of us handled it pretty well. The people in this community are very resilient and did a good job, and the community did a good job. But it really is worth stopping and realizing that everyone has been through a lot of stress without the normal social support to help us get through that. I do think that has contributed to what we've experienced in the last couple of years. I think we need to relax a bit, take a big exhale, and realize that at long last, the worst is over. And we can give ourselves a little break. As the recently deceased Queen Elizabeth said when she addressed her nation in the middle of the pandemic, to paraphrase her, better days are returning. We are with our friends again. We are able to be with our families again. And we are meeting again today and elsewhere. And with that, let's be a little gentler and kinder to each other and to ourselves. If you feel like posting or venting on next door, just don't. Call someone and vent in person. It's much more therapeutic. And if you think it's going to be hard to change this divisive environment, it's not. Just think back to the Woolsey Fire, where everyone was first and foremost each other's neighbor. Nobody asked each other, are you a Democrat or a Republican or an independent? People were just there for each other. And that Malibu is still here. When we think of humankind's greatest achievements, what do you think of? Space travel? Putting a man on the moon, putting a man on Mars? That's pretty mind-boggling. But mankind's most boggling achievement of all, one that affects every aspect of our lives and indeed made space travel possible, are amazing feats of human organization and collaboration. Only with thousands, sometimes tens of thousands of people working together has all of human advancement been possible and our modern lives possible. Think about it, what it takes to get water to your home, every home in this city and every city around the world, what it takes to get gas, electricity, to operate a port, to operate a plane company, even if they don't always arrive on time, and love them or hate them, what it takes to operate Amazon. These are logistical wonders pulled off by wonders of human collaboration. The human capability for organization and collaboration is not only one of the great strengths of the human race, it is our most mind-boggling achievement. So when you think of these times which seem so divisive and how we can get back to more cordial times, we already know how. We do it every single day of our lives. We did it in spades in the Woolsey Fire. You're home. You've always been home. Just do it. As the Wizard of Oz said to Dorothy, "All you have to do is click your heels." So let's start doing it today at the forum. The other thing to keep in mind is that studies have shown that committees in collaboration almost always come up with better ideas than somebody working on their own. Not surprising, putting our heads together, brainstorming works. And that's one of democracy's great strengths. The essence of democracy is vetting and debating ideas to decide as a community how you're going to resolve a problem. And that is what we're doing today. So let's begin. First of all, I'd like to welcome several of our elected officials before I welcome the candidates. Today, we're honored to have here Mayor Paul Grisanti, Mayor Pro Tem Bruce Silverstein, who's in the back there, City Council Member Mikey Pearson, and City Council Member Steve Uring. Karen Fair says her regrets early on. She wanted to come, but she cannot make it today. I'd also like to welcome, oh, I, okay, I'd also like to welcome, sorry, I just had to find out, Stacy Rouse, if you want to take a look. She is our, from Malibu, and she's running for the school boards, the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School Board. I don't think I see Jefferson here, and I don't think I see Pam Milak. They did RSVP, but sometimes things come up. Paul, Mike, Bruce, and Steve, thank you for coming. I think it always makes the forums better. And you guys have been through this in the recent past. This must bring back memories. Could each of you say just a little something to our candidates as they start off? Ryan, if you could give Paul the microphone. Unfortunately, we have only two microphones to play with.
What I want to say is that as divisive as you think we have been, you will find, if you're elected, that nearly all of the things you vote on will end up being unanimous. And that is because we share our positions, we talk to the people, and something turns out to be a good enough idea that everybody gets behind it. And that's what this is really all about. And look forward to whoever gets elected exchanging ideas. And when somebody calls you with a complaint about Malibu, have them tell you what it is, and then ask them, who is the proponent for the other direction, and talk to them
First of all, great words, Jane. Thank you. That was awesome. There we are. Candidates, thank you all for stepping up. Oh, okay, Bill's in back. It's a lot of work. It's a big job, and the city needs you, so I appreciate each and every one. I will share advice I shared to a couple of people here. First, forum can always just be a little nervous. You don't quite know how it's going to work out and, you know, all that. So a couple of hints that I'll share with everyone, those of you I shared with already, sorry. But stand up, face the crowd, take a breath, be relaxed, be authentic, be yourself. Don't try and be somebody you think you need to be to get elected. People want the real you. And lastly, if you don't know the answer, that's okay. Just, you know, there's other ways to answer that. Just acknowledge it's a great question and that, you know, you'll want to find out more about it. This is very early. This isn't the time to pretend to be anyone else. I think you're all going to be fabulous. Bill, too. And thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Those were good words. Bruce, I think you have.
Can you talk about a microphone?
Okay. That's fine.
I have three things I want to say. Take it off your mat.
No, he's not comfortable. Bruce, let me wipe off my microphone.
So is three? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I can't hear it. It's interesting. So three things I'll say is, first of all, you know, this is, right now, you're in an election. I was reading an article about the Olympics, track and field. You've got sprints, you've got marathons. You're kind of in the hybrid here. This is the long-distance sprint. Two months, two months of sprinting, but then it's the marathon afterwards. So you gotta just get, hit the ground running, but also take a breath. The second thing with respect to the issue of divisiveness, I assure you, at least speaking for myself, whoever wins this election will be welcomed by me onto the city council. So whoever, let the best person win. And then lastly, I just want to say, and I hope this isn't viewed as divisive, but we were told that the rules today were going to be that everyone must wear a mask, I think with the exception of when the candidates are speaking. And I know we've got at least one candidate who's sitting here in the back of the room because he was uncomfortable being up there with people who are just sitting around without masks. So I know that's a divisive subject in some societies. I hope it's not here today. But I would appreciate it if everybody would follow the rules. Thank you.
Yes, everybody should be keeping their mask over their nose and their mouth. And yes, the candidates, the candidates, when they're speaking, are free to take their masks off. And actually, when they do, they're at more risk than you are. Steve Uring, do you have a comment or two for the, Steve, you're ma, oh, yeah, you're
I have good advice already, so I'm not going to try and repeat any of that. You're all smart people. You've decided to take, to join a quest that is going to keep you active. It's going to be helpful for the city, so I wish you all the very best. And I think, you know, the advice, be yourself. That's what we're looking to vote for, and I think that's what the people in Malibu really need. So thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you all for your comments. Can you hear me? Okay. I think we, they were all very cogent. And by the way, I want to point out that when I said that these comments coming in, this longing for Malibu to get back to friendly Malibu, it wasn't just about city council meetings. It was about our community in general. So I wasn't trying to take aim at the city council for that. Before we start, I'd like to quickly also thank the board members of the Malibu Democratic Club. They're for you, they're there for you and for me, month after month after month. Lance Simmons is our first vice president, and Lance himself has run for city council, so he certainly knows what that's like. Ted Vale, sitting here in the front of the room. He's been a vice president of the club since 2011, and as you'll see, he'll be doing the timing today. Garen Cosoyan, who's outside. Garen, can you hear me? And can you step inside for a minute? Not quite? We'll go on. Bill Swartus, Bill Swartus in the back of the room. Bill is chief technology officer of USC's Institute for Creative Technology and helping us with the technology, among other things. He's also volunteered for his 20 years for the Lost Hills Sheriff's Department, Disaster Communication. Mike Thomas, who has very kind, every time I've asked him to help us livestream, he's always said yes. And we're very, very lucky to have that. He is a former CNN producer and a former producer of podcasts at our own Malibu's Kurt Co Media. And two valuable board members who are not here today are Lou Lamont. After Lou served two terms and, I think, two terms as mayor of Malibu, he kindly offered to serve on our board. And I suspect Lou is watching by livestream today because far be it from Lou to miss a meeting. And last but not least, he's not here today, but David Kramer, our treasurer, who is unbelievable. This club couldn't function without him. Few other technical announcements, and then we'll get off and running. The livestream is being recorded, which means that people can watch it after today if they want. For people at home, don't worry, you're not being recorded. It's just here in the room. You'll be able to find it at the same livestream link or on our website. For the format, each candidate will be given two minutes for opening statements. I'll then interview the candidates, generally asking a question, and then giving each candidate an opportunity to answer. There will be some questions where it will be individual candidates. And then for the questions, I'll announce after each question how much time you have to answer. Ted Vale is our timer. He will have time, 30-second time up, 15-second time up, and time up. And you better obey him because he brought a megaphone today, although I've encouraged him not to use it. There's not enough time with five candidates, six candidates, I'm sorry, to have specific rebuttal time. So if there's something you feel you need to rebut, you are allowed to do it in your next time up. That's how we've done it in former forums. It works pretty much for important points. Lastly, each candidate will have a minute. I'll give you a minute and a half if we have the time at the end for a closing statement. But by that time, people will generally be very glad to make the closing statement short.
That's not the audience?
Pardon me? There will be, well, we're not there yet. We will be, there will be question, there will be a Q and A with the audience after the interview portion of the program. For the questions you'll get, I will be asking you questions about issues that you'll have to face if elected or that enough people have in terms of just questions or clarifications of your own qualifications that it's relevant for the forum. None of the questions are intended as criticism of any of you, I can assure you that, or our current city council, or any city council members. And if I do my job well, people on various sides of issues will like some of my questions, and they won't like others. In general, we welcome a lively debate. Personal attacks, of course, are not allowed. So, and now let's begin the forum. So Ryan Happ, Mary Ann, Bill, Doug and Jimmy. To start with, please tell us a bit about yourself, what inspired you to run, and what you'd like to accomplish. One question we had was, why do they want to do this job? Requires a lot of hours, including those tortuous six-to-seven-hour meetings, every two weeks for almost no money, but with guaranteed headaches. Ryan, you're the first one up for this. Do you have a mic?
I wanted to thank everybody because I think I know most people in this room. This is the 11th, this is the 11th candidate forum for our city. I think I got the dress code. I'm looking at Mikey Pearson and Mayor Paul Grisanti and Bruce Silverstein. We're all wearing khakis and some form of a dark blue or blackish shirt. But that's kind of what Malibu is, is we're a bit laid back, but we take our issues very seriously. And I became active the first year of the city incorporated. Got a flyer on every chair from me. This is not a new gig. I'm running on my record. There's been an issue with my campaign from 2006, and I want to put it out there, it's unresolved. I'm working on it. My future votes on city council are what the city needs to be concerned with. Mine is a personal matter. It has nothing to do with the city. There's nothing criminal about it. There was no discipline. There's the issues of the library fund. We're in the Malibu Library. There's going to be close to $20 million to spend on a second branch if we choose in the next three or four years. And maybe we should be having this debate on Point Dune. That's just a thing. My background's been in public safety with the city. I think I've done it for mostly 11 years in transportation, working with Caltrans to try and make DCH a safer place. I've worked the fires in Malibu. It's a difficult city, but it's something to be cherished. We can improve on what we've got, and that's why I'm running for city council.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us here today. My name is Happ Henry, and I'm a public servant and entrepreneur, lifelong Malibu-born-and-bred resident who is running for city council in 2022. I grew up in what I consider the tail end of classic Malibu in the 90s. I was born in '92, the year following our city's incorporation. And my mom, who's lived here for 50 years, you know, I hear tales of her riding her horses down the beach, and no one's bothering anybody, and everyone's getting along, and that is not the city we live in today. So the overall arching theme of my campaign is doing whatever we can to restore the Malibu way of life and defend what's left of it. I'd like to increase our public recreation opportunities, get a public pool, performing arts center, get our permanent skate park in, and a community garden specifically. I'd like to expand our senior programming. I'd like to pursue continuing our independent school district movement. And thank you, Stacy, for joining us today. And I encourage everybody to go out and vote for the other three candidates who Stacy will be endorsing and in the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District School Board race. I served as president of Malibu High, Malibu Middle School. I was on the city's youth commission, on Santa Monica Malibu's Measure BB Advisory Committee. And I'm currently serving on the Point Dune Community Services District, where we have recently expanded our role from recreation to public safety and fire prevention. I'm a Point Dune resident, and I've also resided for a small time in my childhood in Malibu Park. And I've worked in eastern Malibu, all across town. And if elected to serve city council, I pledge to represent all of Malibu, focus on residents' serving interests, and bringing diplomacy and level-headedness back to our city council.
Mary Ann? Hi. My name's Mary Ann Riggins. I have, was not born here. I lived here when I was 18 months old. I have gone to our Malibu Public Schools, raised my daughter in Malibu Public Schools. I've been an employee for the city of Malibu for the past 16 years and been very involved as a parent within the schools. I served as the president of the Athletic Booster Club. I'm a current member of the FDAC for the Malibu area with regards to development of the new buildings and school improvements in Malibu. This is a committee that's strictly Malibu residents. I'm running because I feel like I have a voice to make some differences in Malibu. I'm strongly in favor of good communication with our residents and our neighboring partners in government, and just trying to work to make Malibu better for our residents. I also am in favor of a separate school district. Malibu needs to be in charge of our school district, and we need to be making the decisions locally. I'm in favor of having our community recreation and getting back to the things that our residents need, such as a community swimming pool and other community recreational needs. I do want to see the skate park become a permanent facility and also want to see things on the west end and on the east end of town. Our residents should have access to what we need to make our lives fulfilled.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Sampson. I would like to thank the Malibu Democratic Club for making this afternoon necessary. I am running for office because a bunch of people I know and respect and like ask me to do so. If you think I'm being standoffish, it's intentional today. If I bring COVID home, I will lose my wife. That's a heavy burden that I do not wish to impose on me, nor on my daughter, nor on her. I really sort of got into being a politician, and now I'm a politician. I couldn't spell it last week. Over the STR issue, I found that, in my opinion, past city councils, when alerted that this thing was about to happen, did nothing for a very long time as the problem expanded or metastasized, if you will. So I am here now. I have other concerns. My daughter went to school here, all the way through. She was in the same place almost, except the very first year they reopened Point Dune. She was in the first class. They only had fifth grade. Chris Jennings taught it. I got to be a chaperone on a trip up to Monterey Bay Aquarium that I helped arrange. And the kids were watching a movie, and I guess it was old. I don't go, really go to movies. I'm kind of media, I don't know, not very, I don't pay much attention to it. And then they go, that is Chloe's mom! And sadly, I then met Olivia Newton-John, whom we all miss. Her part in the movie was great. I am here because I think the community can do better than we have. That is my goal. That is my promise. I promise that whoever is first will be mayor.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Doug Stewart. I'm a resident of Malibu for now almost 23 years. I want to talk a little bit first about my background. And by the way, I also want to thank the Malibu Democratic Club for putting this on. So nice to do this in person. Now, my background, my career has been in business and banking. I started out as a banker full-time, working my way through college. And I wasn't your local banker. I was actually running business units in banks. They were regional, and then it was national. And I ended my banking career over, after about 30-some-odd years, with two of the largest banks here in California. I then took an odd twist in my career. I became the chief administrative officer and then the chief operating officer of the largest commercial printing company on the West Coast. And that lasted nine years until we sold to an even larger national printing company. My current business activities, I'm a, run an independent boutique consulting firm for families and their investments. And I also am on the board of two corporations. Now, as far as one of the rumors on social media, I am not a real estate developer. Never have, never been. None of my clients are real estate developers. Just want to make that very clear. Now, as far as what my campaign is based on, it's based upon my service to Malibu. I became a member of the CERT team in 2008, one of the original ones, with Brad Davis, and have been an active member of CERT ever since. Now I'm an auxiliary member, and by the way, I'm current on all my FEMA classes, which is helpful as we look at evacuations and fire issues. Oh, boy, 30 seconds. Got to talk quick. I encourage, I'm also on the vice chairman of the Malibu Public Safety Commission. I'm on the board of urgent care, and I've also been the president of my homeowners association or treasurer for 20 years. I encourage you to look at my website, stuartformalibu.com, where you can find about what I'm all for. I've got 12 major points on there about what I think needs to happen in Malibu. 15, stop? Oh, geez, okay.
Hi, my name is Julie Sular, and I'm running for Malibu City Council. So it's coming out?
The red light needs to be on.
I believe the people of Malibu want someone who's experienced and competent as a leader. And I also believe they want grownups on city council. And I think they want to believe that whoever's on city council, that they are in good hands with that person. Before moving to Malibu 24 years ago, I had several decades of experience as a human resources manager and at various other positions in human resources with some major companies, several of them, which include Johnson Controls, Bell Helicopter, Textron, Mount Sinai Hospital. And I think in learning, a lot of those human resources skills would come into good play here as a city council member, because every day we were learning to and did deal with a lot of, a lot of people that did not agree, employees, employers, bosses, other people. There were salary negotiations. There were charges of discrimination. So there were always a lot of, there was always a lot of mediation happening, even with labor organizations and things like that. Then, fast forward the past 12 years in Malibu, I've been a reporter with the Malibu Times, and I've learned all about all the committees, subcommittees, commissions, and all the agencies that I contact that deal with Malibu. I have contacts with board of supervisors, California Coastal Commission, state parks. And so I think I know my way around the city and around the agencies that relate to the city. And I think one of the reasons, okay.
Top half will be first, the next one up. For our next round of questions for the candidates. Yes, can you hear? Is it better with that? Yeah, okay, fine. We've only got two microphones here, so we need We've only got two microphones here, so we need a little bit of, we would have added more on, but the system here doesn't provide for it. The second round of questions, again, this is for each of the candidates, and we're in rotating alphabetical order. So the person who comes second goes first this time around. That's Hap, that's you. Okay? I'll tell him in a minute. The next question is, in your view, each of you, what are the three most important issues facing Malibu? And what would you do to address them? Now, by this, we're not going to deep dive, we'll dive into more of that later. First, we just want to know, as a candidate, what do you think are the three most important issues? And anything that you can say in one minute about how you'd like to see them addressed. So it's one minute each. What are the three most important issues facing Malibu, in your opinion?
Can you hear me? There we go. Number one, our environment. If we don't have a home, what do we have? And what can we do about that? Is follow our general plan, follow the codes we've got in place, and not overdevelop our coast. That is big. We've got sea level rise projections and other issues on the horizon that, you know, I plan to be around to face here in Malibu, and that is something I definitely prioritize. Number two, public safety. We have a shortage of patrol on our highways and in our neighborhoods, both commercial and residential. I know Highway Patrol has been sorely missed since they left when we formed our city here. And we can do whatever we can to get them back, in addition to empowering our local neighborhood groups and getting more beach patrol. And number three, 10 seconds, I say public recreation. I already mentioned some of the programs I encourage us to pursue as a city, and thank you.
Tell all the candidates, we're going to have time a little later on to probably deep dive into some of these issues. So first, we'd just like to see, in your opinion, what are the top three issues facing Malibu?
I would say the top three that we have is miscommunication in our community, not enough community recreation, and not control of our local schools. All of these will encourage our community. If we limit the amount of short-term rentals, and we have it as a resident-based use, and have residents controlling when and where the rentals happen, that will encourage more people to actually live here full-time. We get more full-time residents by having more community recreation and control of our local school districts. More families are going to want to move here. More people are going to live here. All of those things are going to make our community better. They're going to bring us together, so when the event of something horrific happens, we know each other, we know our neighbors, we know who we can count on. Thank you.
Okay, number, number one is adherence to the vision statement. I will not take the time to read it. It says we're going to be a rural community. The proliferation of STRs doesn't make that happen. We don't have kids in our school, that's a big deal. We don't have many kids coming there. Every single one of those places, once you have it, they aren't in our schools, they aren't in our churches, they're not in our service clubs, they're not in our city council meetings, they really aren't part of our community. A couple of my fellow candidates have mentioned recreation. I will confess, besides this, my nose runs because I can swim in the pool. And I would love to have a pool. If you guys, if you citizens want it, they're not cheap, but I'd love to have it. You want a skate park, tell us. But we got to pay for it, and we got to pay for law enforcement. I'll do what you say. I'm not going to say we got to have a pool, or a skate park, or an art center. What you want is important to me. Did I get to three? I'm done.
Okay. There's a common theme in everything that I've got on my website about the 12 things for Malibu. Common theme is the population, families, taking care of our town, Malibu. So let's talk about the top three things. First one is public safety and the police and fire. If we don't have a safe and non-burned downtown, that's the first step to having Malibu as we want it to be. The second thing is school separation. The future of our city lies with the families that move into our town. And if we don't have families coming into our city, we don't have a city going forward, it'll just be another Newport Beach with weekend houses along the shore. The third thing has to do with parks and recreation. Once again, it's about the families and bringing things together for our community. I grew up in a rural part of the country, and I will tell you, the school and the common facilities brought the town together. That's what we need here. Whether it's a skate park, a pool, or something else, it's for the public to decide. We've got the land we needed to use. Thank you.
I think the top three things that need to be done are, first of all, because we lost our own house in the Woolsey Fire almost four years now, and it still hasn't been rebuilt yet, I think we need to, the number one thing to me is to rescind that ordinance that allows overnight camping in the hills above Malibu. Number two is the short-term rentals. We've got to work with the Coastal Commission to get that done. They promised at last month's meeting that if we would just send our team to work with their team, that we could have a short-term rental ordinance in six to eight months. And that needs to happen. Lastly, the city now owns five vacant lots, totaling 94 acres. And it's now that the pandemic is almost over, we need to figure out and work with our neighborhoods to see how do we best use that land? Does it stay vacant? Do we build things on it? What do we do with those 94 acres?
I'm going to keep my cheat sheet, but I know it by heart. It's public safety, that includes fire, traffic safety. We had a problem just last weekend where, like, the coroner wasn't going to be able to make it to Malibu very quick, because there was a huge traffic jam and... So the public safety aspect, which has to do with fire, emergency preparedness and response, two things that I've worked with for over 10 years with the city. And I was one of the most disappointed in Malibu to see the Woolsey Fire sit down by the fire department. And several people in this room lost their homes. That should never happen again. We should not shut down our city's emergency operations center in the middle of a fire. The building is made out of solid concrete, has asphalt as a complete perimeter, and it would have been a place manned by a fire department representative. Pepperdine was secured because there were people there. Malibu shut down our emergency operations center and retreated. The second is development. We have hotels. We need to work on variances. And the third is fiscal responsibility.
Thank you very much. I've got to say, I agree with every issue that everyone listed, that they're all really important issues for all of our community. Deep diving into some of the issues that you've raised, deep diving into some of the issues you've raised. Let's talk about building fulcrums of community. I was very encouraged to hear several of the candidates talk about how we do need to build fulcrums of community here. Malibu is 21 miles long. You've got to have places where people come together and recreate together and support each other. Some of you already answered this, but do you support the establishment of a Malibu Aquatic Center, where both senior citizens and babies could, and families of three generations could come together? And what could you do to start making that a reality? One minute. I guess, Mary Ann, you start. This was one of the things you supported, as a matter of fact.
This is something I'm very passionate about. I grew up swimming. My mom made sure that every child that she had, every grandchild that she had, learned to swim just about the time you could learn to walk. She enjoyed swimming, and one of her major disappointments as a participant of the Malibu Senior Center was the limited access that they had for water aerobics. There's a very short window within the summertime that seniors are able to use the pool. Additionally, there's a very short time that youth and others can learn to use swimming and use the pool. We need a separate, independent structure from the one that's with the high school. I would support that. I think that fundraising would be a great way to do that for establishing it. We have the land, it's identifying the proper location for our residents to have it, and then start a fundraising campaign. Pacific Palisades was very successful with their fundraising campaign to get their local pool built. Thank you.
Okay. In a sense, I have a conflict, because I may be asked to vote against a pool if you folks don't want it. I intend to vote for it if at all possible. I swim three mornings a week, I should correct that. I am in the pool with swimmers. Most of them are lifeguards. And I just tell them, if they see me on the bottom, if they can still make their intervals, they should come get me. I don't know if they will or not, but I would like a pool. I worked, there was a school district drawing, they tried to, "Where do you want stuff?" And Steve Hotchkiss and I spent a lot of time dealing with it. What we really wanted was to have it out on morning view, so that it was accessible to the public during the day. And it should be a 50-meter pool by 25, with room for water polo and water aerobics and all of that. I would love to have it. If you folks, if you elect me and I represent you, wanted that, I will do everything I can to make it happen. It won't be cheap. It'll be fun.
I actually had a job as a Malibu swimming pool lifeguard. I know what they can do. It is a magnet for the community, it's a magnet for the kids, and it will operate as many hours as you leave the doors open. It's a wonderful thing to have. But let's talk about where we are. We've been talking about a plan for our parks and recreation now, ever since I can remember. We talk about it, but we don't put the plan together. And as Bill mentioned, you know, if this is what the public wants, then that's what the public should have. We do need to put together a plan for Parks and Rec. I think a swimming pool and eating facility is a wonderful opportunity to bring our community together. Now, is it going to cost money? Absolutely. Do we have money in our surplus? Yes. Is it too much money in the surplus? Depends on how much money we borrow. But this is where you get into fiscal responsibility and prudence. Now, vacant land? Sure. But we need to make sure that facilities we put together are for the entire city. 21 miles long, Big Rock, the rest of Trancas, everybody needs to have access to the community facilities. A swimming pool is a great thing to have. And Ted's going to tell me to stop.
I can swim. I was once on a swim team when I was younger. And of course, I'd love to have a swimming pool here in Malibu that I could exercise in. But it just depends whether any of the current five vacant parcels the city owns would be suitable for building a swimming pool or an aquatic center. I just don't know. They'd have to be evaluated. And also, the neighborhoods living near those may not necessarily want the traffic and the parking lots that these bring. It just seems like these are things that people object to all the time in Malibu when it comes to building a recreational facility. So I think we would just have to have neighborhood meetings and community meetings and some surveys to see who wants what where, and hopefully, you know, hopefully, they will want a swimming pool somewhere. And hopefully, it will be feasible to build one on one of the lots that the city currently owns. Thank you.
I have the same answer, is it needs to be what the city wants. I grew up with a huge pool, it was 11 feet deep, and I know because I had to clean it. And swimming might be more appropriate, the Boys and Girls Club, if they could find a funding mechanism for a pool. I don't know if the city needs to be the one. Pepperdine's got a great pool, you can join the crest club and use it. So it is up to a community survey, because the big question is where should the pool go? And who's going to use it? Is it so certain instructors can have classes in a city-funded pool? Or is it a pool for residents? So that's my basic thing with a swimming pool, is there's a lot of special interest groups that come out at election time. So, you know, this is par for the course. And same thing as a skate park, the city has a plan for that. We have Parks and Rec Commissioner here in this meeting. We have a Parks and Rec Commission. I'm not so sure if every candidate's familiar with how that works, but that's your place to get public input. Thanks.
Yes, I support a public pool in Malibu. And the ultimate questions are where, and how much public input can we get, and what does that look like? But it's something I plan to pursue if elected and support regardless. One issue that Ryan brought up potentially is forming some sort of joint use agreement with the city in either the Boys and Girls Club or the school district. I was just meeting with Principal Miller at Malibu High last week, and this is one of the issues we discussed. I believe that any joint use agreement with the school would be contingent, in my personal opinion, upon having an independent school district, because anyone who's ever rented a facility from our district knows it's a big pain. And once we have local control over that, then joint use agreements and public use of our school facilities will be much more friendly to our community here in Malibu. Thank you.
I'll just make a little note. Little known fact is, before I moved to Malibu, I was president of the Friends of Tomescal Pool in the Palisades. And they had that pool, and its meaning to the community was fantastic. There's a little film I can post on our website. It was Joe Edmundston who closed it down. But we put together a business plan where the cost of repairing the pool would have been totally privately raised, and the pool would have paid for itself. If we ever get to that point, I'll be happy to share that business plan with people in Malibu. Next question about fulcrum of community, something that a lot of people want. Let's try to keep this to 45 seconds or something. And that is, you know, it's very sad we lost the Malibu Playhouse. There's a desire to have a performing arts center of some sort, a theater, or a cultural arts center. What are your thoughts about a cultural arts center, a performing arts center? I think Doug, this starts with you. I'm sorry, Bill.
As a past president of some clubs, I know that presidents never get it wrong, right? Okay. I think a arts center is a nice idea. I think they also involve parking lots. I don't know if we can afford it. That's a tough question. How big is it going to be? How much concrete are we going to pour? Do the people want that? If they want it, I support it. If not, or if they want to choose a pool, a skate park, open space, what have you, that's what elected representatives are supposed to do. I neglected to mention in my qualifications that I am the current title holder of the most appalling aloha shirt at the Channel Islands thing. Stop, it says, I will.
It's a yes or no answer, but let me say yes about the community facility. This is one of those magnets that I talked about before, about bringing the community together. If you don't have a there, there, you can't have a place. So we look around, and we've got the Malibu Film Society has no place to go. We have no place for the plays, we have no place for assemblies, art programs, and so forth. Yes, it needs to be a community determination. But look, this is what makes a city, a town, a community. And if we don't have someplace to go, you can't bring everybody together. And pretty soon, you're not a town anymore, because nobody is here. All right, with that, I want to also say it's a community decision, because it's not about do we want one or not, it's about the priorities of doing it. And I've mentioned to one of the Parks and Recreation Commissioners, if you guys come up with your strategy, make sure you prioritize what they are. Thank you. Thank you.
Personally, I would like to see a performing arts or an arts center. But again, it's up to the community to decide. We would have to know which of the vacant lots we currently own we could put it on, which ones the neighbors would tolerate. We also, we have a very antiquated, in my opinion, permitting system for the arts, whereas ongoing art events can only happen six times a year. So I'm not sure how this would work with a performing arts center unless this got changed. Other than that, it's great. I certainly witnessed many events at the Malibu Film Society, and it did bring the community together, gave everybody something to do at night, gave so many people a chance to meet each other and socialize that they wouldn't have had otherwise. It's very much missed.
The city owns a performing arts center. It's at 23825 Stewart Ranch Road. The city bought the performing arts center and changed some of the practice rooms into City Hall and council chambers. And we were all promised that the city would allow it to be used for performing arts in the future. I see everybody nodding their heads back there who's got about as much hair as I do. So that building is underutilized Friday, Saturday, Sunday, every week. And it needs to have an operational plan where skilled people can use the room and set the council dais back up again so it's ready for Monday meetings. But we have the facility, we have the parking lot, we're ready to go. Thank you.
Yes, I love the idea of a performing arts center. And again, the questions are where are we going to put it and how much community input can we gather to make this a reality? It's something that, you know, I don't want to personally see some big 100-plus-thousand square foot performing arts center in Malibu, and I would bet that a majority of us don't. At the same time, I'm confident we're able to work together and get a modest performing arts center, whether it's at an existing facility or on a vacant lot that will be potentially palatable to the residents in that neighborhood. Thank you.
This is a no-brainer. Yes. Malibu without an arts center is not really Malibu. We need to have a place for people to gather together in a variety of important recreational and cultural events. We had a concert at the Bluffs before the fire. It was a great success. People came together, they had a wonderful time. The Film Society, they have had incredibly successful events. They need to get back to those. We are fortunate, we do have a new college that's being built just at the other end of this building. It has a large area in it. Will it be appropriate? It may or may not, but that's something we need to look at, that this is something we need to study and prioritize.
Yeah, I thought so. I thought so. We're good. We're good. Okay. I thought I'd give you a taste of what it's like. Oh, did you get to answer that? Yeah. I thought I'd give you a taste of what it's like to be a city council member. How many in this room, just for my curiosity, have ever called City Hall and not been able to reach the person they needed to talk to? Ooh, a lot of people, including some of our city council members. How many people have ever called City Hall and couldn't even get through to the receptionist, the main number? Ah, okay. I called City Hall in preparing for this one day. I called City Hall six times one day at different times of the day, couldn't get even the receptionist. And I said, what day is it? It was Tuesday during the day. So here's my question to you. I think most of our city staff is pretty darn good. At least in my experience, they've been very helpful and very accommodating working with us. But when you call any company, any city, any office, and you don't even get someone to answer the phone in the middle of the day? I know when I worked in two-person offices, we made sure that phone was covered all the time. What would you do if elected? Because I don't think, I think it creates a bad impression of the city and it's not fair. But it also creates frustration in the citizens. If you were elected, what would you do to ensure the phones are answered all the time during the week at City Hall? That's, oh yeah. 45 seconds. Got a lot to talk about today.
When you think about answering the phones, it means that somebody has to be there. And we've all experienced that frustration with remote call centers and so forth. And I'm a big advocate for getting people back in person. This is a critical thing. If you don't have people at the office, there's nobody there to answer. It goes to voicemail, it goes forward, forward, forward. Getting the offices open again. There's a CEO in the United States who made a comment, he says, every employee is being mentored by somebody, and you can't be mentored unless you're close to those people. City Hall needs to be open, the City Hall meetings need to be open. We need to be back in person as much as we possibly can. And while remote work is a nice thing to have, you've got to get remote work in the office so they can answer the phone.
I'm dating myself here, but one of the things I always had to do in human resources was supervise the main receptionist and switchboard operator. And yes, that had to have somebody there every minute of the business hours, and I don't understand why the city doesn't. I don't think scheduling should be that difficult. Surely, there's people that can fill in for the receptionist when she or he goes to lunch. So that's just, it's poor management, and it's not being considerate of the customers that are the people that live here or the other people that need to do business with City Hall if they can't get a human being on the phone when they first call that can help them.
I hope for the day we don't have to clean the mic and we can all be back in meetings and up close and sharing roundtables, doing the type of study and thought when we did planning like, well, General Plan Task Force when we were doing the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Those things were, the community gets involved and engaged. So, I'm sorry, let's go back to, what was the question?
The question is if you were elected, because you're going to get those kind of complaints if you're elected, what would you do to be sure that the...
Oh, the phone? Well, come on. I sold phone systems and have programmed them for 30 years. You get a backup person. There's a button called night service. You hit it and another person starts to field the calls. It needs to be part of the job description, and we don't need to be too compartmentalized that I don't do phones.
That there's a lack of communication at City Hall. And in any leadership position, you've got to look at what's working and what's not working. And this clearly is something that is not working. I am not an expert in telephone communications like Ryan here next to me, but Ryan is absolutely someone I would listen to in getting that forwarding call button on this issue. And, you know, with any government body or any group of people, you've got to get on the same page about stuff like this, make sure people are in the position to succeed, and make sure that the city works for the people. That's the point.
Mary Ann, I think you might have more insight into this than anybody else. For those of you who don't know, Mary Ann worked for the city for many years.
Well, my answer's going to be like everyone else's. Have sufficient people in City Hall, have a proper staffing at City Hall in order for the residents to be serviced.
Is there really not enough employees right now in City Hall?
We are down several positions, yes.
Probably something, who, again, I need, who's up? Bill, you're up next. Go ahead.
To quote a well-known movie, what we have here, a failure to communicate. So how do we get the phone answered? I don't think it's the council's job, it's the city manager's job. The city manager doesn't do the job, we can find another city manager. I don't think that'll be necessary at all, but if the council leans on the manager and says, hey, answer the phone, we can do it. It should not be too difficult. I don't know how to make phone systems work. I don't know how to make my own phone work. I spent three hours with T-Mobile trying to get a cellphone done. That's not how to handle the phone calls. We can do better. City manager will do it. Thank you.
Another question I can guarantee you you're going to get if you get elected because a lot of people on Point Dume are upset about this, is the tow lot on Heather Cliff. This was a tow lot that was created without taking it to the Point Dume community. And I'm not, I do live on Point Dume. I'm sympathetic with that position, but I'm not talking only myself. I've not met anyone on Point Dume who's happy about it. What would you do to be sure it doesn't become permanent? Whoever gets elected, they're going to, this issue is going to come back. I can see Mikey. They've been there. Okay, so Jimmy, you're up first. One minute.
Well, it is just a temporary thing until the high school construction is done. That's my understanding of it. So I didn't really understand why Point Dume residents got so upset. It had to go somewhere. They looked at a lot of different places around the city. Nobody wanted it. And we didn't want to pay the tow company to take cars all the way over to the Thousand Oaks area each time they were towing. They did put up a privacy screen so that you don't really have to look at the cars that have been towed, and there aren't that many of them anyway. It only takes up a small area. I don't really know what the big deal is. I can't imagine it would become permanent, though. If we're lucky, somebody that owns a lot will offer it to the city for rent that might be suitable and more out of sight than this is. And that's about all I would have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. I think Ryan, you're up next.
It's not easy to start off. It's not zoned for it. It's a temporary use. I think it was a big mistake. The city got squashed into a time constraint and was told by Public Safety Commission that there were thousands of cars that had to be towed, and the city was making bank off of this, $150 a tow. They needed to go tow and put the car down and go get another one. And if they're busy going to Thousand Oaks and back, they just couldn't tow and make the city all this money. Well, what we found out was there's only a handful of tow's going on, and it was one of those things that just grew out of misinformation. The city should have known better. We have a track record, we go back and look at all the five years of history of towing, what it's been. There aren't any more beaches, you know, nothing's changed. So the process was that a couple of real estate agents on the Public Safety Commission went out and started negotiating with other properties, including the school district and others, to see if they could find a place for a private tow truck company to make business off of Malibu. I just think it was all a mistake.
The city dropped the ball on this with a lack of foresight and planning, and I want to thank Steve here for including a sunset provision in that emergency ordinance that I believe was significantly overblown to wrap this up in the next month. And one question I've had that's unanswered that maybe someone in the room here can answer for me is why was the Chili Cook-Off site not explored more thoroughly and why couldn't we figure out an alternate location for Labor Day weekend?
The tow lot was a success. And I would say to anybody who has a driveway along Pacific Coast Highway or someone that has a fire hydrant near their house, if something had happened and there had been a car illegally parked in either of those areas, what would you have done? If you had an emergency at your house and somebody was illegally parked in your driveway, what would happen? The Public Safety Commission spent a long time looking at a variety of lots available. The high school lot was not available as it has been available in past years because of construction at that site. Yes, the Heather Cliff lot was a temporary fix, but the Public Safety Commission has already started looking at alternative sites for this next coming year and future years. This is an unfortunate reality when you have 15 million people coming to your city annually. You have to deal with illegally parked cars. A solution needed to be found.
I don't know if this is the right time, but I have a quotation from a couple of my favorite writers. I cannot vouch 100% for attribution. For every complex problem, there is a solution that is clear and simple and wrong. We were wrong on putting all these cars at Heather Cliff. We can do better. Thank heaven, it is temporary. It's an emergency ordinance. Next summer, it won't be there. I know the Public Safety Commission people did work pretty hard looking. The school district, I wish they had not, I wish they'd played ball with us. They want us to play ball with them, but it doesn't seem to always be a two-way street, at least not in this case. I would have even tolerated them in my neighborhood on the lots up above Broad Beach where they were a year ago. Chris Ross told me somebody drove over the edge, so maybe that's not a great idea. And I don't think CarCrushers would pass constitutional muster. Thank you.
I'm one of the Public Safety Commissioners, and this was our project. And Ryan, you got alternate facts. Let's go step by step. First off, the two real estate people that supposedly brokered these deals didn't do it at all. They helped identify locations and turn it over to the city to try and find the locations. They didn't negotiate a darn thing. Now, about the number of cars. If you go back to the days when Malibu Tow was here, they had 1,500 cars towed a year. And when you look at what we forecasted, we said there'd probably be around 50 cars a day, worst case. It could be less, could be more. So far this year, there have been 305 cars towed since June 18th. That's 38 cars a weekend. Now, let me tell you, and Ted, I'm going to keep talking for a second. This last weekend, we had the beaches closed down, the Chili Cook-Off, and in Public Safety next meeting, we're going to do an after-action review of how well we handled that. One of the first things that would have come up had we not had the tow yard would have been, we need someplace to tow cars to. We towed 75 cars in those three days, and it was a critical situation for the Sheriff's Department to get those cars out of the way. We were overpacked. It needed to be done, and I'm done.
Thank you, by the way, all of you so far. It's been a very interesting discussion. Did I start? That's why, by the time we keep doing this rotating thing. Okay. No, I think I'll start. You've all gotten to answer that question, right? Okay, good. Ryan wants a, okay. Ryan, you've got to do it at the next...
Yeah, the question really isn't whether we should be towing cars or not. It was simply the location where it could be. And it didn't have to be there. That's...
Let me pick up on this. I mean, one reason I use that as an example is... I mean, one reason I use that as an example is the next issue we wanna talk about. And by the way, thank you, all of you, I think you all had good points, you all provided some good information. Would've loved to have this conversation before the decision was made. Oh, Jimmy, Jimmy, did you not get to answer? You said you did. You did. Yeah. As I said, it's hard when you do the rotating to keep track of who started. You know, one of the ways... The good news is, I think all of the candidates recognize that there's a need for better communication. You've all mentioned it, or most of you have mentioned it, and that relates to the rebuilding of more trust. I think we have a good city government, I think there is a trust issue and confidence issue in the public, and I think a lot of that does relate to communication with the One thing that the Heather Cliff lot provides an example of, and again, I know Point Dume because I lived there, but I know similar issues have come up in other neighborhoods. There's at least three times in the last couple of years in Point Dume where the city council has taken a decision, the tow lot being one of them. The other thing was a gate and alligator teeth at Point Dume, one of our most beautiful nature preserves, they did it without taking... They were going to do it without taking it to the neighborhood. They do... They take actions with major impact on the neighborhood without first holding a town hall in that neighborhood. They used to do that. They really used to do that. I remember two town halls on Point Dume about road bumps in earlier years. So, my question for... So, the question... Two questions for you. If elected... And by the way, this has been asked to the last two sets of candidates in 2018 and 2020. If elected, would you commit to taking issues that affect a neighborhood to the people of that neighborhood before making a decision? Things that really affect their lives in that neighborhood. And one minute is fine. I think, Ryan, you're up first. Thank you, Bill.
Why we stopped doing it was somewhere around 2015, and that's too bad, because we bought the Performing Arts Center and spent millions of dollars to remodel it to become a city hall. The proximity is not much different than the room we're in right now. I mean, we could be meeting in the council chambers, frankly. Don't know why we couldn't, but the... Well, see, money, okay, maybe we got a money problem, we can fix that.
It costs about... And really, the city hall staff is great.
Okay.
About $800 to do it at City Hall.
Don't count my time here. The Point Dume School has a big auditorium where there may even be a debate, and that is available, same as Malibu High School, they have a huge auditorium, or did, but there are alternate locations. When Point Dume was the community center, there were meetings there all the time. So, we just have to be creative. There's actually a shortage of meeting rooms in Malibu, and that's part of something that would be solved with the... In three years, we'll have $20 million to build a library complex, which could have all sorts of components, and it would most likely be positioned closer to where the population center is near Point Dume. There's a lot of properties there, city-owned, some of them, where it could very well...
Yes, I do support getting as much feedback as possible from each neighborhood that will be affected by anything that this city does. Malibu, as we all know, is a big place, very spread out, and each neighborhood is not the same, and comes with different needs, different concerns, and different strategies in order to, you know, get anything done over there. And so, the more amount of feedback I'm concerned, the better. And whatever we can do, like Ryan said, get another form of community center on the other end of town in the next five or 10 years, hopefully, and more places to gather, more places to share ideas, the better. Thank you.
I'd like to gather information about how people find out about things. We have a city website that posts events, meetings, e-notifications, so that you can get notified by things that are going on in our community with the various commissions and council. We also have social media, and a local newspaper, and radio. How are people finding their information? If you're not getting the information from those means, please let council know how to get the information to you and what information that you want. I do think it is important that if there is a specific idea or event that's happening in a particular neighborhood, that yes, it should be held close to that neighborhood. It would be great to have mobile meetings or anything else like that, but the most of the mountain is, we need to hear from the residents. How are you getting your information, and what do we need to add to ensure that you get all messages?
I still have the touch, I guess. Absolutely, we oughta have neighborhood meetings. The problem might be, how do we tell that there's sufficient information or demand for that in any given neighborhood? That should be fairly easy. Mary Ann mentioned the city's website. I actually find it to be pretty good, so they've done a pretty good job with that. Great websites, probably explain why Jeff Bezos is worth so much. That one works. I may not like him, I may not like what he does to his employees, but I push the button and the stuff's at my doorstep. So, get in the neighborhood... I don't know if we could do... We can't build something like that. We can build something pretty darn good, and that's one way to find out from the neighborhoods. For example, I might just want to have the volleyball net tightened at Zuma. It's been a long time since I played there, but I might be the only one. There's a whole bunch of people, we need to find out, and yes, I'm willing to go to the neighborhoods. There are neighborhoods I haven't been in since 1979, when we were looking for our home. Thank you.
I'm sure all you city council members are listening to this and dying to be able to answer. Don't worry, we're really not attacking you. Okay, okay. Yes, indeed. Don't worry. This is... I said in the beginning, I'll say it again. This is not intended as a criticism of our current city council. Go ahead.
I happen to be a vice chairman of a bank that just was awarded 100... One of the 100 best places to work in Southern California. And the reason why it's like that is because it's something that I've done throughout my entire business career. It's called participatory management. And it's hard to do under the Brown Act, because it's hard to get everybody assembled and meet all the qualifications. But in business world, you're able to bring people together and say, "Let's pick your brains, let's talk over the issues, let's find out what's going on." We can still do that in small groups with ad hoc committees, and as Mary Ann said, "Let's get the information out there, let's find out who needs to be together." There shouldn't be any time that we're keeping people from being participatory in the process. But what you have to do, you have to reach out there and grab 'em and go to 'em. This gets back to what I was talking about before, having places to meet, that they're there. So, whether it's at Big Rock, or at... Along the beach at Carbon, or, you know, Point Dume, every one of these places, there should be an opportunity for people to come talk to the city council member and visit with us and tell us what we need to know.
Yes, of course, if there's gonna be a big change affecting a neighborhood, there should be meetings with that neighborhood. I'm not sure what some of the comments were about concerning how the city communicates these things. I do think face-to-face meetings with people, finding out what the neighborhood's opinions and problems are, is very important. I think perhaps sometimes when changes are made, we can't always anticipate how that's going to affect the neighborhood or the people that live there, and we need to hear from them directly in a meeting as to maybe get some suggestions or some changes in whatever's being proposed. Thank you.
That thing, the question wasn't whether people could go to the web city website and look at agendas and see what was on an agenda of a commission. The truth is, most people are too busy to look at the agendas all the time, even if they get the notices. The difference between today and before is if there was an issue affecting a neighborhood in general, whether it be the alligator teeth and gate at Point Dume or road bumps, you used to get a postcard, and they would hold a hearing, they held it at Point Dume School, they can hold it at the Point Dume Club, same thing for other neighborhoods. There's times when the city council needs to reach out to a neighborhood and say, "We're about to do something that's gonna affect your lives. You need to know about it, we want your input." That's right. Now, having said that, we'll go to the follow-up question to that. Would as... If elected, would you commit, as candidates, to hold quarterly meet-and-greets in different neighborhoods of Malibu? There's a lot of popular... People love these forums, they love the meet-and-greets during the election, and it never happens in between. It's different to do that, where you get to talk to your constituents, and where the constituents can go to City Hall and ask a question for one minute. So, that's one question. I'm gonna have you answer the other question within the same time allotted, and that is, do you think that people would feel better represented if they had... If we had elect... If each of our city council reps represented a specific area of Malibu? With that, I think, who starts? Hap? One minute.
Reverse. I do not, off the top of my head, support district-based voting in Malibu. I believe council people in Malibu ought to represent all of Malibu, and we, as a city, it's our responsibility to get people from different neighborhoods onto our council. And pardon me, what was the first question, Jane? Oh, the quarterly meetings?
Sorry, just came on. If elected, would you commit to holding at least quarterly meetings in different neighborhoods of Malibu?
Absolutely. And wherever, you know, some neighborhoods don't have facilities, and if there's people, we can somehow get to open up their backyards and/or their houses for those neighborhoods, great, and we'll do what we can. Thank you.
I agree with Hap. I also believe that the city council represents all the residents of Malibu, and it's our responsibility to meet with each one of those neighborhoods to find out specifically what's unique and important to that neighborhood. I also agree that having meet-and-greets throughout the community on a regular basis are a great idea. I know the sheriff is doing that, and they're having coffee with the sheriff, and it's quite a success. So, I would encourage that whoever is elected to the council, that that's something that they implement going forward as part of their time.
Okay, the first one's easy. Yes, I'd go to quarterly neighborhood meetings. That's pretty simple. District-wide voting is a great example of a complex problem. Melvin Grimes has, I guess at least, threatened us with trying to implement that. My concern with district-wide voting, and I don't think here I approve of it in Malibu, and I haven't thought deeply about it, is that district-wide voting could very easily result in wholesale gerrymandering. I believe it's in North Carolina where 49% of the population elects 77% of that state's senate. That's a bad result. I don't think it would happen here, but I would be concerned. Thank you.
Hard to keep track of the microphones here. All right. I mentioned that I used to be in the printing business. We ran plants up and down the West Coast, 168 hours a week. One of the things that the management team did, and I did especially, is 3 o'clock in the morning in Seattle, I'd be in a break room, anybody that wanted to come in could see me. That was true for everybody in the C-suite of that company. We were always around, always in places, talking to our employees, letting employees talk to us, because the consensus building was what was critical. Now, is this something we oughta be doing in Malibu on a quarterly basis? No. It needs to be done on a rotating basis all the time. You could have two council members rotating, going from various locations, and I use Big Rock, or Point Dume, or Tranqus, and meeting on a monthly basis, rotating, seeing people, getting their feedback. Now, about council districts in 15 seconds. We only have 10,000 people on our census. That's a small district in most cities. Look, we don't need districts in a town where we only have 10,000 people. We see a lot of people at Ralphson Pavilions, so we don't need to have that.
On the districts question, I can't imagine, there would be some districts, I would think, that couldn't come up with a candidate for city council, and so what do you do in that respect? I'm not sure you could always get enough representation or enough candidates from different... From each of the different districts to ever make that work here. Going in the other... As far as the quarterly meetings, of course, I think it's a great idea. I understand this... Perhaps we could do it by homeowners association. I think the city keeps a list of homeowners associations that we could get. I think it's a great idea, because I think when you're on city council, you tend to get emails and phone calls from the same people over and over again, and perhaps getting out into the community, you would get to talk to other people that aren't normally squeaky wheels, and you get to see more about what a broader range of people are concerned about and what you can do.
There's a lot that goes into that question, is if you read this, the Santa Monica City districting decision by the court, the NAACP petitioned against having districts, because it's so easy to start a fiefdom within a district, where that representative is only interested about what's within their area, and they virtually all agree, they don't want the low-income housing project in their own district, and there starts to be this fighting going on. The other is, I think the city council members need to know what's going on everywhere in the city, and not just paying attention to their own areas. One of the structures that's done that way is that the council has council hours at City Hall, where you sit there and your constituents can come visit you and explain what their situations and problems are directly. We don't have council aides or deputies in this city, volunteer or otherwise, but, you know, that's kinda real.
Let's talk about one of our favorite topics in Malibu, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. There's two basic issues that we face, and so it's sort of nice to hear what you all have to say on that. I'm gonna ask both questions, because of the difficulty of passing the microphone, so you can address both when you answer. One is fire management. The MRCA is notoriously bad at really managing its properties in terms of fire safety. Is there anything we can do, working with the county or elsewhere, to put pressure on them to do better? You may recall that firewall came over MRCA-managed land, for the most part. One of our greatest fire risks in Malibu is our neighbor. Secondly, equally not more important, the MRCA, as all of you are probably aware, has been attacking Malibu neighborhoods one by one. The tactic is, they will go in and either buy a piece of property in a neighborhood, or otherwise take action that's actually not legally justified or authorized. And then they... Which causes individual homeowners, if they wanna stop it, to have to undertake very expensive years of litigation. And Joe Edmiston knows this, it's his modus operandi, it's nothing new. So, we've had it in Ramirez Canyon, we've had it in Sycamore, we've had it in Puercow. Is there a time where, as a city, we should not take cognizance of what is happening and begin to take it up as a city? So, two questions. Fire management of the MRCA, and is there... Should we be stopping, looking, and saying, "This is not just a problem for that neighborhood, it's a problem for all Malibu because it..." It's a problem for all Malibu because it just continues"? I think, who starts this time? Mary Ann?
I'm doing one minute.
Yeah, I think, on this one, two minutes. Okay.
Fire management. I think communication with our neighbors. I think we need to show verifiable proof of the damage that is done when our neighbors do not take care of their property. MRCA and Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and the county, for that matter, are our neighbors, and they need to be held accountable. We need to be organized as a city and show the proof of what it does when they do not manage their lands properly. And they must be held accountable for it. And if that means going up to the state and showing the state how this is done, then they need to be held accountable for that also, since Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy and the MRCA's funding comes from the state of California. With regards to the systematic picking off of neighborhoods as they have done, that needs to stop also. The city needs to come together as one group and speak with one voice. What hurts one of us hurts all of us, and we need to show that. One thing that MRCA is very good at is touting their horn at how good they are at public outreach and the benefit that they bring to underserved neighborhoods and bringing those into Malibu. We need to show that Malibu residents are good stewards of our environment and that we share with those around us. Doing more to show what we do in Malibu as residents for those that are underserved, between our surf camps, between arts festivals, between all sorts of other things. We don't say enough as residents what we do to our fellow man that surrounds us. And that's something MRCA has been very successful in doing. We need to change that conversation and show that we also are good neighbors.
Some of you may know that I do not necessarily often agree with Councilwoman Farrar. She said at a council meeting one time, "Joe Edmiston is a lousy neighbor." I am paraphrasing. She is correct. He is a neighbor of mine. He invites all these people in. They're absolutely, they're entitled to be there. I have no beach rights. My family has no beach rights. People come to the beach, he doesn't clean up after them. It's one thing to acquire the property, but maintaining it is something else, and Merka has utterly failed. As far as fire management, some of you may remember Marjorie Hansen, the kindergarten teacher over at Cabrillo, and her daughter, little girl, well, she was 14 when we moved in. She's now 54. Her husband is a Merka ranger. They live on Merka property about a quarter of a mile from where that fire started. They foamed it in immediately. Well, you saw the result of that. It strikes me that Merka doesn't care. I think the splitting up neighborhoods point is absolutely correct. Right now, Merka wants to establish a, an easement. The easement's already there, excuse me. I think it's used by one or two properties, and they want to essentially make it a public easement. It's in a neighborhood of serious heavy hitters. Michael Eisner's house is there. You've heard of the area. And those people might be interested in helping us. I don't want to speak for them. I don't know any of them. I know some people across the street, but it's a whole different world. You've got a captain of industry out there who's about to have somebody invade his place. He's trying to sell the place. There are some other big-time people there. Maybe we have a shot of that. I'd love for them to help. The city, you know, we're fighting the state. We have, everybody knows, we've got a whole bunch of people besides us making decisions for us. I guess that's it. They shouldn't make our decisions.
Yeah, Karen Farrar said it absolutely perfectly about MRCA and the Santa Monica Mountains. They're a lousy neighbor. They actually have more lawyers than they have rangers. And when you look at places like Sycamore Canyon, where they're taking people and basically trying to extort acquiescence out of them, that's wrong. Now, what do we do about it? Well, first off, we've got to have a better conversation with state legislatures, because as far as they're concerned, MRCA does know wrong. We've got to change that dialogue. This is where you have to have a discussion with them. And it's, it's got to be a discussion that's done proactively. One of the things, when you look at the school issue that Malibu City has taken on, it's sort of outside of our jurisdiction. But why is it important to us? It's because all the families and the kids are involved in it. It's something the city needs to take control, needs to take action on and be the lead. Same thing is true for these issues with the MRCA and the Santa Monica Mountains. This is a city issue. It's not a community or neighborhood issue. Now, one of the things I proposed the last time I ran, and I still want to do this, we need to get all the homeowners associations together and start talking from one end of the town to the other. Get them to come together, at least the president or a designated, on a periodic basis, and talk about what's important to them. Once again, community listening, but also to start making sure that if you pick on one, you pick on all. And this is where the city can have influence on it, as well as bringing the homeowners associations together. We've got a bunch of HOAs in this town. Now, as far as it being one of the appropriate things to do, to take on the MRCA and so on, you've got to remember, we have to share these beaches with the rest of the state. Coastal Commission has a mandate for 40 million people to be on our beaches. We've got a town of 10,000. We've got to tell our story a lot better. We've got to be more convincing about it. Gary Haldeman has talked to me numerous times about the fact that we need to have a better PR program to everybody around the state that doesn't just make us sound like a bunch of rich people that don't want anybody on our beaches. Thank you.
Yeah, Joe Edmiston is a, he's a master PR guy, and he is way, way ahead of Malibu as far as getting in with the agencies that could affect us. He was way in with Sheila Kuehl right now, and basically, I think without Joe, we never would have gotten that ordinance signed to, to allow overnight camping in the hills above Malibu. He also presents something at every single monthly Coastal Commission meeting. Talks about how wonderful they are and how terrible Malibu is. And he's in front of the Coastal Commission all the time. He's in front of the Board of Supervisors all the time. Nobody from Malibu is representing Malibu at either of those agencies, and I think that needs to change. We need to live in those offices ourselves. We need to get in there, really establish the kind of relationships with those agencies that Joe has had and enjoyed for years. And we need to work with them, not take constant adversarial stances to get things done. We need to be their friend, and in turn, I think they'll be our friend. Joe also has unlimited resources when it comes to legal help from the state. He can pay, he can get as many lawyers as he wants to do whatever he wants in Malibu. And unfortunately, a lot of our, when he first started taking over our neighborhoods, the neighborhoods were pretty much on their own. I was very surprised that the city never stepped in to help them, because it does affect our whole city. Because now he's taken over four neighborhoods, basically. He started off with one, and he just keeps going and going, because nobody stops him. So I don't know that the city of Malibu has the resources of the state of California when it comes to legal help, but I think we could really do more than what we've done to help out our fellow neighborhoods.
Absolutely. It is incumbent on the city of Malibu to help the residents, the citizens defend their private property rights. You need to find out where that is, but I've read it. It's in, somewhere in our codes. City has not done that. The city dropped the ball on Sycamore Park. Ramirez was able to fundraise to take the state on originally, and the city attorney and Christie joined in later. Same thing happened when the state water board came out here and said, you know, everything's polluted and, and everybody in the civic center needs to go on a sewage treatment plant so we could build all this commercial stuff. And that was also not true, but city chose not to stand up and challenge that overreach. It just keeps happening if you don't challenge the state. The, part of the question, I think, has fire management should be brush clearance on these adjoining properties that they, they own, and I think they should be required to do Joe says he has a fire department and a fire truck. That's, that's not a fire plan, I'm sorry. They're a fining agency, and the owners of Sycamore Park have these huge fines against them for having a security guard sit at the side of the road and not going along with the charade of turning a single-family residential zoning district into a public access trail. So some well-connected beachfront owners, however, did get the city to start paying the bill to study wave uprush and sea level rise, which, you know, each of the properties along the beach really has to study for their own particular circumstance, and whether they have a seawall or don't, and so forth. So it's been hunting, I guess, which side of PCH you live on. I mean, you can kind of categorize it that way. I hate to say, but parking for these, these uses of MRCA has been a magnet for crime and vehicle break-ins.
So I haven't had the pleasure yet of meeting Joe, and as soon as I do, you know, I'm sure I will relate to all of you who have met him and how I feel about that. I have done outreach to our, not only our candidates for county supervisor in this district, District Three, but also other candidates, not just candidates, but incumbent county supervisors from other districts, because just like city council, anything that gets done at the county level needs three votes. Our last vote was five-nothing against our favor. So with that said, we've got a lot of work to do, and that starts with breaking down Joe's argument and the county's argument, that Malibu is full of elitists who don't want any visitors, and we have no visitor-serving amenities. Most of our campgrounds in the area are vacant for nine-plus months out of the year, or nearly vacant. And while there are things we can do, such as establish a community garden and other potentially visitor-serving amenities, we've got to break down the argument that we're a bunch of spoiled elitists who are entitled to our Malibu paradise and nobody else is, you know? I grew up in this town as not your typical Malibu child. I was on free lunches, free bus rides in public schools, and I do not fit the image of your, you know, trust fund, generational wealth, Malibu person. And I know many of you in this room don't either. Thank you.
Thank you for all your answers. I thought they were all very interesting. And now for a question where nobody would believe this was a Malibu city council candidate's forum if I didn't ask him, short-term rentals. What do you, as candidates, think the proper solution is? And for that, I'll point out that there's several competing interests. We certainly don't want corporations coming in and de facto operating hotels in our residential neighborhoods. But does that justify throwing the baby out with the bathwater? We also don't want somebody who's renting their homes through Airbnb just throw parties. That would be quite a nuisance. But don't we already have regulations that deal with that? The countervailing interests are, Airbnbs are actually a nice place for people to stay often. It's sort of, when I've used Airbnbs in other cities, it's sort of like a more homey way to get to know a neighborhood. It's very much old Malibu in that sense. Go stay with someone, get to know the community. It's also, I've talked to people where actually having the ability to rent part of their home out or their home while they're away on Airbnb helps them meet their mortgages payments, which are not insubstantial in today's real estate market. So what is the right balance? You know, the Coastal Commission recently rejected our requirement, I believe, if I got it right, that, that you would always have to have a manager on site or at least very nearby. What thoughts, what thoughts do you have on the Airbnb situation in Malibu? I think we, let's say a minute and a half, because I think that's sort of a meeting one.
Well, yeah, you are correct on that one, Jane. We, it's probably what got me here, more than anything. There are, right now, there are two motels on my street. They are, I've held them at bay for a while now, which is a good thing. One of them was purchased by an investor who has never spent a night in it, and immediately people were coming in, you know, four-bedroom house with 10 people in it or more, 10 are permitted. We had a statute that, in the opinion of the then-city attorney, Christie Hogan, followed what was called the permissive use in the Keene case. That means zoning works, if it ain't permitted, it is prohibited. Those were her words to me and to all of the then-council members. It is an opinion at the time that had not been tested. It still has not been tested by the California Supreme Court. It has been tested in the Court of Appeal, and the Court of Appeal disagreed with that analysis in the Keene case that has been much discussed. However, we still have the Supreme Court. We had an ordinance. All we had to do was say, "Okay, Mr. Jones," or whoever, "You are running a motel in a residential neighborhood. It does not comply with our zoning ordinance," and see what happens. Better to be carried out after battle than just turning tail and surrendering. We surrendered. We created ordinances that permitted these things. We shouldn't have done it. I will do everything I can to minimize this danger to our neighborhood. These people don't go to our schools. Thank you.
Let's get one thing straight. Short-term rental is a business being operated in a residential community. Nobody wants one next door to them, and that's a fact. But two years ago or so, the city council worked out a concession or a consensus to have a hosted short-term rental program that's met most of the requirements for the citizens as well as the residents that didn't have one next, had one next door to them. It's a compromise. Now, we tried to take it to the Coastal Commission. Coastal Commission has to approve that ordinance, and we didn't fully negotiate with them. I was at the meeting in Gillette Ranch and watched what happened. They basically said, "You stop negotiating with us. We wanted to work with you to get an ordinance done." And we need to go back to them and try and work that out, because there's actually two constituencies here. There's the residents of Malibu, and there's the Coastal Commission. Coastal Commission has to approve it. You don't do anything without getting their approval. Now, what's the downside of not getting anything done? We are making it perfectly able for the short-term rental operators to not have an ordinance. Without an ordinance in place, they're living scot-free. They can do whatever they want to do. Now, if we put an ordinance in, one thing I want is heavy enforcement, proactive enforcement. Policy number 43 in the city is that we do not do proactive compliance. But for a short-term rental, we need to have proactive compliance with full investigations paid for by, performance paid for by the fees paid by the short-term rental people. I wish I had more time to go over that.
I think this all goes back to our, our neighbors of just getting too commercialized. It started off, you know, 15 or 20 years ago with rehabs, and then suddenly the rehabs clustered so that there was six houses, all being run by the same rehab management company. Then, of course, last year, we had picassos starting to appear, which they call fractional ownership, which is really time-sharing. And now, on top of all that, we have short-term rentals. It's just too much. Some of our neighborhoods are disappearing. They're all becoming nothing but businesses, and that's why I think the city was so urgently wanting to get a short-term rental ordinance passed. There've been a lot of towns, not on the coast, so not under the Coastal Commission, that have already limited the number of short-term rentals in their towns. And I think we were well on our, on a good path to getting one passed, except for some reason, the, well, the Coastal Commission wanted, they thought that our proposed ordinance was too extreme, and that was the one where we were going to ban all non-hosted short-term rentals. Well, that was too extreme for them. We're going to have to compromise. They're willing to work with us. They've said that they would work with us, and that if we did send a team to work with the Coastal Commission staff, we would have some... the Coastal Commission staff, we would have something within six to eight months. To me, that compromise would be better than not having any short-term rental ordinance at all, which is where we are right now.
The city has used its own contracted legal representation to try and take on the state on several issues, and we have a terrible track record of that. We need to have the best arguments, because this is an attack on our local zoning, is an attack on our home rule, and it's a business can commercially use in a single-family zone for most instances. This problem also started partly with city staff, looking at the dollar signs that they could collect, if they could just impose existing transient occupancy tax on these rental uses. And that's a tail wagging the dog problem. That's a council member problem. You need three votes on the council to stop these problems from going south. That's the bottom line. The city made a deal, a settlement with Airbnb, early on. The city would not audit the tax collections. We would just take whatever they send in and accept that. And that was the deal. And that was kind of where everything started to go south. There's a balance, this intensification of the neighborhood use, and the strangers in the neighborhood are an assault on the local community, while everybody had property values, until one of these things opens up next to you. The city has allowed, through its policies, a replication of this business. And as soon as there's non-hosted, it can be replicated and investor-owned, and that's a problem. Cities get to regulate business in their jurisdiction, and we just need to say no or regulate the heck out of it. Thank you.
I see short-term rentals in Malibu as yet another example of how our city has dropped the ball over the years and set a terrible precedent for what can be done in our neighborhoods that are meant to be residential and meant to be homes for working-class families and, you know, the Malibu that I grew up in and that a lot of us moved here for. One thing that I would like to see on the next short-term rental ordinance that we work on is a cap, similar to what we have with our film permits here in Malibu. If you want to disturb your neighbors and bring chaos into your neighborhood for a film shoot, then, you know, you can do that a certain amount of days a year. But there's a certain amount of days a year that you're limited to doing that. And so there is, of course, a balance, as Jane said, between, you know, if someone wants to go out of town for X amount of days over the summer, or whenever, we still want you to be able to make a few bucks on your home if no one else is going to be there and it's not going to be available for long-term housing stock. On the other hand, like others have said up here, this is about our neighborhood rural character, and we cannot afford to lose that. That's what makes Malibu, Malibu.
So, I think we need to establish a hybrid approach. I think our hosted is a positive ordinance, but I think hearing from the Coastal Commission that we do need to have a certain amount of unhosted those. Regardless, any short-term rental that we have in Malibu, it should be permitted. And that permit should have the ability to revoke that permit if they do not abide by the rules. Noise complaints by the neighbors are absolutely the number-one thing that should revoke that permit. Fortunately, the Coastal Commission, this is not a unique issue to Malibu. Every community across America is dealing with this issue. Permitting those units and limiting the amount of permits that are allowed in any particular neighborhood is how many communities are dealing with this. And that's how it should be done in our community also. There shouldn't be an oversaturation to one particular area. There should be a finite amount of permits. There should be a blend between hosted and unhosted. And we should work with the Coastal Commission to find something that works for our residents and make sure that we get back to what Airbnb originally was, which was a vacation house swap for the resident to be able to take some time and enjoy another community and have them enjoy our community.
Thank you so much. For the next question, it's an ethics and integrity in government question. I don't expect any of you to be familiar with it. I'd be interested to hear your thoughts and reactions. Couple years ago, I went to a city council meeting, and for, can't remember what reason, but you're there all night, you listen to what goes on. And there was a citizen who had a building permit request under consideration. He wanted to make some changes in a commercial building he owns in downtown Malibu. I should add, I do not know this person. I was just there observing. A very casual discussion occurred at the city council candidate, and I must say, it's Mikey and all, they think the current city council was not on, I don't believe you were city council members at the time. But the discussion that ensued is whether this person would donate $800,000 or $1 million to a city, some sort of city foundation, in order to get the building permit approved. I later learned that this is possible in Malibu, and the money is used for good purposes. But in 2013, in a Supreme Court decision, and this was after 2013, called Kunst versus St. John's River Authority, these kind of requirements of paying money with insufficient nexus and proportionality to a building permit is not permitted. Many towns still do it. And my purpose in raising it today is not to argue whether that would fit within the Kunst ruling. My purpose today is to raise the issue, because I have serious concerns about this being good governance. This is something that I think not only the people who have to pay these kind of fees should be concerned about, but people who are concerned about overdevelopment in our city should be concerned about. This is an issue on which both sides should agree. Why? Because even though there's no corruption, I don't think there's a city council member that ever took a dime, I don't think there's a city employee that ever took a dime. The criteria for getting a permit okay should simply be our city plan and the criteria of the regulations. The minute you enter in the potential for a city to get $800,000 or $1 million to do even good stuff. In the Kunst case, it was to protect wetlands. You have provided a substantial financial incentive for a city council to say yes when maybe they should say no. So if you were elected, would you look into this practice with an eye to basically getting rid of it? If the city needs money for these other projects, there's other ways to raise it. Were, A, were you aware of this, and B, would you be willing to look into it? Who do we start with? Is that you, Doug?
I'll say.
Uh, so I'll say two minutes. Two minutes, if you need it. You don't have to take the two minutes if you don't need it. You probably know more about it than I do, Doug.
Look, you know, we talk about Joe Edmondson extorting people. And when you think about these fees like this, this is extortion. Now, let's be clear about the difference between a nice-to-have fee and one that's mandated. When you have a project that has an impact, for instance, on streets, or water system, or nearby, yeah, there needs to be mitigation fees for that to offset the cost of correcting the problem that comes with the project.
That's correct. I should say that's correct. That's correct. Even a correct.
So there's a good fee and a bad fee. And a bad fee is where you're going, "Okay, you can buy my vote if you make my special project over here successful." That's just wrong. And I appreciate Jane bringing this up to talk about that.
I should add, and I'm sorry, give him a second. It's not because a particular council member's project would go.
Oh, no, no.
It might be a good, something the city wants to see happen.
I fully agree. But when you get the city council to agree to it, it becomes everybody's honey pot. And that's the wrong thing to do. Now, as I mentioned, there are white fees and wrong fees. The white fees are the mitigation fees, and we should have those. Whether it's a traffic study says you need to have traffic lights put in, or you need to have a wider street, have the developer pay for that because it directly benefits his project. But when it's something else, the answer is no.
I agree on the surface of it, that it doesn't look, it does look like extortion. But sometimes, I think some property owners have assets that the city's interested in, and these are assets that the city couldn't get any other way, like, for example, perhaps an extension to a hiking trail, or wetlands, or just some kind of escha that perhaps could be saved if it was given to them. But in general, no, I don't think it's a good practice. And I don't think that every large project should be made to think that they have to make some donation to the city in order to get their project approved, so.
Jimmy, that, there's been other Supreme Court decisions that ruled those kind of decisions illegal. That had to do with requiring a donation of land. This has to require, this involved the imposition of fees. But Doug is also right. If it's to mitigate, if you're putting a project in and they have to put sewers in or expand roads, and you have to bear that cost, that's different. This is when it's, there's not a sufficient nexus and it's unrelated. Who's next?
I think it's the most sickening part of government when that concept is portrayed to be acceptable. If the city has a proper structure and analysis of these projects, and has sufficient cash flow from whatever resources it has, the city can go buy land and effectuate the type of community that the city wants. The example with this would be something like Anaheim and Disneyland, you know, trying to work out something where both kind of mitigate a problem and the city gets some money. Well, but the city doesn't become the city of Anaheim, it becomes the city where Disneyland is. And so that's something that we need to be very careful about, the integrity of the city of Malibu, and how we preserve and protect our environment, and the rural nature, and so forth. And why would they ever want to go into bed with a developer? Because, you know, they say, "Well, we'll give you $1 million." Well, you look at the fundraising for Legacy Park, we received $1 million. We didn't have to trade anything for it. Selling out the city, though, I would be very scared of any council member who was even eager to interpret this as something that they would be interested in doing. Thank you.
I believe that all projects in Malibu ought to be judged on the basis of their merits, rather than the pockets and the size thereof of the developers. And we ought to take into account our zoning codes and vision statement, everything contained in our general plan when assessing said developments. If they do not meet that standard, and they request variances, I don't think that an $800,000 check, or whatever that looks like, is enough to sacrifice our quality of life and grant those variances. Thank you.
I don't like decisions at the eleventh hour being made at the dais. And oftentimes, this happens. And oftentimes, this is where these funds come up. There needs to be proper analysis of a project prior to its presentation to either the Planning Commission or the city council. And there shouldn't be this horse trading occurring at the council level at the last hour. If something is a question and something needs to be done, then it needs to go back to staff, a new analysis has to be done, and if mitigation fees or other fees are necessary in order to make this a compliant project with our codes, then let staff do the analysis and let it come back through the Planning Commission and the city council. But we need to stop having decisions made at the eleventh hour at the city council level.
Earlier this afternoon, I referred to our vision statement. That and the mission statement to me, since they're right at the top of our zoning code, are the supreme law of our little tiny land here. If there is any kind of a conflict about what should and shouldn't be done with building, or you can't figure it out, you need to go back to 17.02.030. That's the site to the ordinance. Every council member takes an oath to support that ordinance. We can do that. If they've got to have an exception, they want a million bucks, don't do it. I'm sure I'm reminded in, Ms. Moderator, thank you so much for giving me a bar exam question on a class I never had, but I'll try. I'm reminded of when Senator Trent Lott got a submarine base built back in his state that the Pentagon did not want. They went and berserk. Don't do this. I paid for it, you paid for it, you paid for it. That's the kind of thing we're talking about here, and we absolutely should not do it. Mitigation should take place. I think there's a tendency, when we evaluate developments, that the mitigation amount is seldom enough. You know, it seldom covers what it does to your air, what it does to your water. It's hard to, I know it's hard to quantify. But that's the job of the staff, presumably there are experts on it, and hopefully, council members can look at what the staff has done and figure it out. But just giving them money because it's good for the district or it looks good, and, you know, it's bad politically. You go, "Oh, look, I got this done, and the city got $1 million because I approved it." I don't want to be that guy. Thank you.
Just reminded me here that it is time, past time to start, no, this bill, my boardman. It's time to start audience question and answer. You know, we didn't even get to touch on Malibu High, the separation of the two districts, homelessness, environment, and crime and safety. But I do want to open this up to the audience. We'll go on until four o'clock, should give 20 minutes for that. We'll still have a half an hour for a reception. Yes, what will happen is Bill, can I have the microphone? Bill will take, Bill's sworn out here, oh, yes. Lance, I promised you could ask the question first. Uh, Bill? Lance tells me this question will be yes and no for each candidate. Okay? That's what he told me.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I know it's been a long day, and I am going to try to be as quick as I can. Bill, you, uh, Bill quoted Martin Struthers from Cool Hand Luke earlier. I'm going to shift gears a little bit. I'm going to take a Shakespeare quote, a little bit. Prevey is the soul of wit. So therefore, I'm going to ask a couple of questions that only require one word, both of them, so two words. First of all, as an operating governmental principle, is the search for consensus in democratic society something that you will not only support, but will actively proceed with? Show of hands. Who says yes? Five out of six?
I did not understand the question.
Okay. Is it a good idea, I'll put it in Cool Hand Luke terms, is it a good idea?
The term consensus.
Is it a good?
Consensus does not mean support.
Well, wait a minute, you're asking, you're asking me what my question was. Is it a good idea to try to get approval?
Yes.
Okay.
So six out of six, then?
Right? Oh, good. So, you see, we are really making progress, folks. That's pretty good, six out of six. Then earlier, there was discussion about all the things we want to do, and we want to build some things, like a giant swimming pool. I think that's great. I think that's wonderful. I want to make sure that we not only deal with the things which are right in front of us, but also the things which are going to be around long after. of us, but also the things which are going to be around long after we're gone, for future generations. And the environmental issue is the most important thing that we, as public servants, ought to be doing. So therefore, the question is, if you're going to build this swimming pool, and it's got a whole bunch of concrete which goes into a swimming pool, right? Shouldn't we have an ordinance that requires that that concrete be recycled? Recycled concrete? Because concrete is one of the largest proliferators of carbon emissions of all construction materials. So don't we want to do that for our, for our generations ahead? Yes or no?
Yes, yes, using recycled concrete to build a swimming pool. So, how many hands up?
Do you recycle, or recycle?
No, it's using recycled concrete to build a pool.
My understanding is low carbon.
You said something about brevity.
There was a woman here, she had her hand. Carbon emission, concrete's interesting, and I wish we had more time to get into it. I recommend that there'll be more forums before the election's over. I hope one of those is exclusively on environmental issues. Now for the next question.
And in the interest of brevity, we do ask you to limit your question to 30 seconds.
Hi, I'm Jo Drummond, and this last council has not been united, and I do believe it has to do with these two questions I'm going to ask. Where do you stand on the $300,000 payoff to Reva Feldman, and do you agree with the decision of the City Council majority to disregard a 30-year tradition and make Paul Gasanti mayor twice, and deny the position to the top vote recipient, and why?
An unusual thing, I'm going to overrule that question. One is about the past, and secondly, we're trying, you know, we're really trying to talk about the future, and we've got very limited time left, and there are future forums where maybe you can take it up. Phil Curtis?
Actually, I'd like to revisit the subject that you had before about, I'm going to call it payola for permits. I'd like to just have each person say yes or no. Would you actually go in and reverse the permit structures that have been put in place? I'm going to name one, Norm Haney's Hotel in the middle of Malibu, where I think he's got to pay a half a million or a million to get his permit. Not just because it's not good politics, but it's also, we have to be fair to the community and fair to the developers. And to say that we just simply have the power to charge them, I don't think is necessarily what we want to do as a community. So would you, my question is, would you in fact go in and reverse some of the permit structures that are already in place, so that we're not robbing developers? And if the answer is yes, you're also required to say what you might do to bring the kind of money into the community that we need to replace what you're not getting that way.
Yes or no? Can you simplify that? Quickly simplify it?
Yes or no, would you in fact reverse structures that are already in place, where a developer has to pay in order to get a permit?
Let's try to take 15 seconds on each, to try to get other people, in order to get other people's questions asked.
Yeah, well, I attended those hearings, and the, Norm's hotel is a .54 floor area ratio, when the city has a .15 limit, and then you buy, or trade, or provide some public benefit to get to .2. So, he may never build it, we don't know. I've been listening to Norm, and he said he's having problems even convincing himself. I don't like making deals with developers, and I don't, certainly not going to make a commitment here, because I may be elected council candidate, who may have to determine something in the future, and I'm not going to bias myself on camera without knowing all the facts. So, I appreciate the topic, but I can't commit now. I think it's appropriate and foolish. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't want to relitigate necessarily things that are already in motion and approved. I am uncomfortable with continuing the practice of paying for variances, rather than approving them on any potential merits. But, you know, I don't really want to relitigate any, anything that has already happened.
I'm going to do us all a favor, because I don't exactly remember how the question wound up. I believe it was compound. I feel a little bit like a Supreme Court justice being asked, and believe me, I don't qualify for that office. How are you going to rule on a relitigation of Citizens United, or some such? So, I won't take a position on that, and if I'm elected, I do not wish to be disqualified on that type of question. I cannot take that risk. I would be doing a disfavor to anybody who supports me, if anyone.
Do try to limit your answers to 15 seconds, so we can get as many questions from the audience in as possible.
I would not feel comfortable going back and reopening something that's already been settled. And again, as the other candidates have stated, I don't feel comfortable answering questions how I will make decisions as a council member in the future. Other than to say that I'll follow the municipal code, the local coaster program, and the general plan as it relates to any proposal that's put before our council.
The quick answer is, a deal done is a deal done. If you go back and you try and renegotiate what the set-offs were and so forth, you start the whole process all over again. These deals that have been done in the past are now set in stone. We know what we should do going forward, we just don't want to do that ever again.
I kind of agree with everybody else on that. I'm not sure how they arrived at that half million dollar figure in the first place. I'd really have to go back and study how they came up with that number. It does seem like a lot, but without knowing the background, I can't really comment on that. I would also think, rather than being a new development, it's actually a redevelopment. And I don't know if the city has, has rules concerning redevelopments as opposed to new development that should apply here. In addition, I think that once it is redeveloped into a hotel property, the city's going to be collecting a lot of room taxes from that, that they're not getting now. So the city's actually going to have a lot of more revenue coming in than they have at this point.
I'm trying to pick, look at here.
Hello, my name is Scott Morris. In 2019, Malibu passed the Climate Emergency Resolution, which asked the city to reduce its emissions as fast as humanly possible. And we heard a lot from Ms. Riggins today, especially about how we should take the narrative back from the MRCA. One way to do that would be to really become the greenest city that the world's seen. Now, Malibu, when they enacted that climate emergency resolution, the council at that time did a great time, did a great, I mean, a great job, opting in to 100% renewable energy. But since then, nothing, no major climate legislation has been passed. And 50 California cities have passed a net zero code. My question is, for the candidates, will you fulfill the mandate of Malibu's Climate Emergency Resolution?
My first foray into the political world came around age six. I wrote a letter to Bill Clinton about our, and need to do whatever we can to save our environment, and if elected to Malibu City Council, I plan to continue that.
I think everything that we can do to make our world a better place, we should be doing. We did opt in to 100% renewable energy, and that's a great thing. There are a lot of other steps that we can be doing. Our citizens came together and they did the Poison Free Malibu. We've got our Dark Skies Initiative, again, something led by our citizens of Malibu. And I think our citizens can give us great direction on what they want to see next, to make our environment a better place, and make our world a better place. And I will certainly work with our residents to do that.
The quick answer is, the city of Malibu is the best example of how to do things right, and we need to keep doing that. At 100% renewable, it's an excellent thing to do. Rodenticide's an excellent thing to do. Microplastics, excellent thing to do. We set the standard, we hope everybody else will hook on and follow us, be, follow behind
Okay. I'm a life member of the Sierra Club. I joined it when you had to have two members support your candidacy, which, it may surprise you that a club would admit me, but it happened. I am grateful. I am for whatever we can do to keep this place clean. My daughter's going to live on this planet a lot longer than I, I hope, and that's the plan. I think Mr. Stewart is correct, we're doing a pretty good...
My answer's a yes and a no. We have to solve all the problems that we have locally first, and I'm open-minded to the, whatever it is, the Global Center for Climate, Scott, I can't see you anymore, is a very noble thing. I'm not sure about using recycled concrete for a pool, if that's the best thing in the world. Maybe it is. But that's the type of thing that we're supposed to study, and there's, solving the sea level rise and everything else that's local, we have to do that first.
As a member of City Council, what I'd like to do is retake another review of the climate change things that Malibu should be doing, which was a study done by Malibu Foundation last year. It's a whole book, it's a whole long study, they paid for it. I would like to do a review of that study and see what we have done, and what we have not done to prepare for climate change so far, and do the things that we haven't done yet.
Questions? I just asked for anyone who has a question on a topic that has not already been touched I think Bert Ross has been up for a long time. We'll try to get three in, Mary, and Marianne, is that you?
Marissa.
Marissa, okay.
I need a mic?
Nope, he doesn't.
I need a mic, okay. Two people have quoted Cool Hand Luke, and I just want to say, Mikey, wasn't that your father who said, "What we have here, what we have is failure to communicate"? Yeah, okay. He deserves, it's a great line. I'd like to ask the men, the four men, the following question, and that is, will either of you, any of you, support either Marianne or Jimmy for council? Because if one of these ladies does not get elected, we will have no women on our city council for the first time in the history of our city. And if that's the case, how do you feel about that? Guys?
I want you to know that I actually have worked with both of these women to try and help them get their candidacy started. Yes, one of those women, maybe both of them, should be on the city council. Both of them, maybe? I think one of us, there's only a spot for one after I win. All right. Both of them are very qualified, and I'm reluctant to say one or the other at the moment, but I got to tell you, I like both of them, and I think they both bring great qualities to the table. And by the way, it's, it's important to realize that we need to get the best and the brightest in every position we have. Over half the women in United, over half the college graduates are women in this country. We need to make sure that's represented in our city council and government.
I believe that each of the ladies here, Marianne and Jimmy, each has unique qualifications, and I would be happy to serve with either of them on our city council. I lost my dad unexpectedly at age seven. Woke up one day for school, and Dad didn't wake up to take me to school. So since then, my life has been shaped and formed by strong, powerful women, my mom included, who had to skip out and attend Bill Robinson's memorial, rest in peace, for those of you who knew him. And I've got two sisters, girlfriend, who have shaped the way I think.
I support the qualified candidate, and that reasoning is similar to what Doug just said, is, I'm looking at this gender-blind. It's not whether or not you should just be elected, there should be two or three of five council members by a gender makeup, that's not the way our structure is. My other point is that to be elected, you really need to know the town in the first place. And again, it doesn't matter if you're a man or a woman. You need to serve maybe on a commission or two, show some voting and commitment. So, that's about it. I guess I'm out of time.
Say, you know, it's been a bit of a pain, but it was worth doing it in person, and we do hope that nobody, and I think nobody will get sick after this. Bill, you want to give a quick answer, and then I'm going to call in Marissa?
Well, my real response would be, the question's argumentative. I do not make decisions based upon gender, color, like all five of us. I am in favor of mom, apple pie, and Chevrolet. Wait a minute, I own a Mercury, never mind. But I don't make decisions on that basis. I actually don't know either one of these ladies, I met them today.
Hi, if I'm the closer, this might be good. My name's Marissa Ogland. When I moved to Malibu in 19... Okay, thank you, I'm so loud anyway, I thought I was screaming. I moved to Malibu in 1968, at the time I was working for former Governor Pat Brown. And years forward, after work and relationships, in 1979, Fay Hobie was the president of the Malibu Township Council, of which I was part of. And she asked me if I would give a tour of Malibu to a very nice young man, who turned out to be Joe Edmondson. When I met him at the restaurant over by Wells Fargo at the time, a different restaurant, he pulls up in an old Plymouth, a primer spots, and like 44 antennas on his truck. We get in, I made the sad mistake of telling him every nuance, every cubby, every special spot in our town, because I thought he was going to do well. In 1979, Jerry Brown appointed him to the Conservancy, and in 1985, he became the head of the MRCA, and they're incestuous. He runs them both. They control it, he paraphrases from one to the other, flips properties, everything you can do. He destroys our communities here. I've been fighting with him for decades. He's suing Sycamore Park, certain owners, for $6 million apiece. And he has not only attorneys general, but he has $500 discounted hourly... And he has not only attorneys general, but he has $500 discounted hourly private sector attorneys that you're all paying for. So what he does is everything that you wonderfully said, and other people. I'm giving them information because they need to take this forward, so they have it, okay? And so I think it's really important that the community at large... He's very subtle, he's very behind the scenes. Read his website, he does go to all the commission hearings. It's all one pool, cesspool, and they govern each other. And it's very dangerous for our community. Thank you. Every, all of you know that. That's, it was information.
Was that a... Well, I accept your apology, how's that?
If you have an answer, if you want to talk...
And you can look at a blue battered Prius out there, and the license plate is Malabum, that was Fay's before she passed away. I went to Auto Club and got it.
I think, at this point, I'm going to sort of unfortunately cut it off because we are way over time. Two things, there's going to be more forums. I think Big Rock and Scott Dietrich told me they're going to do it on October 8th at 2 o'clock by Zoom. I know the Malibu Association of Realtors is planning one, I don't have the details on that. We'll put it up on your website, watch the Malibu Times. I'm going to let the candidates do closing statements, and after that, anybody who still wants to talk to them, we're going to have a little reception out on the patio. And also, I put the candidate emails on the Malibu Democratic Club website so that if you do have questions you want to pose to the candidates that didn't get answered, please do so. So one minute or less closing statements. Why don't we start with the last? The first shall be last, last shall be first. I think it's... Jimmy Talal, you would be first, because you...
I'll be brief. I hope today you gained a perspective maybe on how I think about things, how I would handle issues if I'm elected to city council. If there's anything I didn't elaborate on enough today that you'd like to know more about, please just see me afterwards, or if you want to get in touch with me to ask some other questions, I'm happy to answer it. My website is still in progress, but it's supposed to be done and up perhaps by tomorrow, and I'll try to get that out. In the meantime, as the campaign goes on, I hope you'll get to know me even better and even more, trust my ability to be on the city council. Thank you.
Well, 90 seconds or one minute or whatever is not very long to talk about complex issues for our city. I'm somebody that takes a little longer to do that, and I'm disappointed in some of the answers I gave because they were so short and we had to be so exact. This is a very difficult time for our city that's coming up here. We've gone through COVID, we've gone through Woolsey, we've gone through economic issues, and we've got outside forces that are after us one after another. This is not going to be an easy world for us to govern the next two to four years. But what we do know is that our city wants something more normal. We want our 600 people back that had their homes destroyed. We want our school system better. Can't believe what I've seen in the schools. I didn't, don't have a kid in school, and see what they've got, is appalling. We also need to get our fire and safety up better. These are things that I know how to do. I've turned businesses around, I've made things better for a lot of people, I know how to do it. I'm asking for your support, and I think you're going to like me if you put me in the office. I'm the kind of guy that gets things done, I listen to the constituencies, I listen to what people want to do, and at the end of the day, I hold people responsible for success. That's my story. Doug Stewart, StewartForMalibu.com.
Public speaking is something that frightens a lot of people, and there are three Bs that are magic, and I'm going to do them. But right before that, I've been a problem solver as a lawyer for 43 years. Basket case cases were handled to me and I fixed them, I know how to do that. You can go to my website, billformalibu2022, and there'll be more, please go there. Be brief, be sincere, be seated.
I ask for your vote for the city of Malibu because I want to work on continuing to get our school district, our own school district, and be separated from Santa Monica. I want to work on issues for community recreation and other community events. I have shown myself throughout the years to be somebody who is a problem solver and who listens and who works with others. I ask for your vote for the city of Malibu so we can have communication going forward, not only within our community, but also within our county, our other governments, and our state of California. Thank you.
This campaign is about how we can best serve the residents of Malibu, the environment of Malibu, and the future generations of Malibu. I know there's at least a couple candidates up here who have raised their families in Malibu, and I believe I'm the only one who plans to do so in the future, hopefully someday in the next few years. I've been born and raised in this town, I've made mistakes in this town, learned lessons. I've worked, gone to school, you know, fell in love, got my heart broken. I've never left this town for more than a month in my life, and I don't plan on it anytime soon. I'm here for the long haul. If you'd like to learn more about this campaign, I'd be happy to meet with anyone individually or in groups, either today or in the coming weeks. And you can learn more on my website at haphenry, H-A-P-H-E-N-R-Y dot com. Thank you for considering this campaign.
Things going on for hours and hours, you've probably gotten enough of me that you probably know my position on everything. A famous Italian once said, "If it were not for the elders correcting the mistakes of the youth, there would be no state." And I think that's true. You really have to form your crystal ball of Malibu to know and be able to see how... The Toulon at Point Dume was a total failure. It should have never happened. And two of the candidates up here, I think Jimmy said she didn't see it as a problem, and Mary Ann said it was a success. I'm sorry, I knew it was going to be a problem immediately, and it should not have occurred. So that's the type of voting that's important as a council member. And my website is Embree for City Council, and I would request that you look there. I am not spending $50,000 of my own money to buy the election. I'm running on my record of 30 years of achievements and support in this community. I'm not for development, and developers are going to have a tough time if they need to vote for their projects, because I'll look at the details. Thank you.
Thank you very much, candidates, I think you all did a great job. We will have a reception out on the patio, and for the city council members who were here, now you know what it was like when you were candidates and city council members for listening to you. So, but thank you for coming.